All right, welcome to the party, everyone. It's good to have you here. This is what we intend to be, and I believe in fact will be, our final work session on SPOSS 2020. So this has been a long time coming. Why give a great chat and thanks to all the Athens Star County staff members who've been engaged in this process for well over a year. Certainly, all the citizens and residents of Athens and advocates for projects. I think, given the volume of work that's gone in, we're going to have a fantastic package that's going to bear dividends for the community in the long term. So this is officially a call to order. I feel like I'm the Riley's or something, according to the agenda, just to let you know what's going to happen tonight. We're going to have a presentation from the Classic Center in just a couple of minutes I'm going to talk about. We're going to talk about revisions to the debt service cost, which, just given the vagaries of the market, is positive news. We're going to talk about any revised project statements that folks might be interested in tweaking. And then we're going to talk about revisions to the project values and statements, which, in the ideal, will wrap up the package. And the intent is, when we leave here tonight, we've got a package that everybody is comfortable with, around which there is some sense of unanimity and commitment that we can bring forward to the voters. So one of the things that had happened very early on in this process is I challenged the Classic Center Authority to come in with a significantly reduced cost, looking for some other funding opportunities and looking for the opportunity to leverage the prospect of an arena to greater things for the community, so bringing things other than just the arena, given its prospective existence. And so, the Classic Center Authority Board, Paul Kramer, Executive Director of the Classic Center Authority, took that seriously and has worked quite a bit on an alternate version. And given that it's significantly different in terms of funding formula from what was originally discussed, certainly a year ago, and in some of the intervening months, I talked to the members of the Commission and asked if they would be interested in a proposal tonight and a presentation on this revision. And so Paul Kramer is here with us and with some of his staff. So Paul, if you can come on up, go ahead and take about 15 minutes for a presentation, a little bit of Q and A before moving on to the next segment.
Great. Well, first off, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to kind of update you on this project. You know, we've done many of the SPOSS projects in the past, and I think we've been really fortunate with the outcomes, largely because we have really paid attention to what the experts have asked us to build. And I really thank all of you for challenging us to kind of look at a public-private partnership and what the private sector can build. And in the end, I think you're going to be pleased with the outcome of all of this. First, I just want to remind you of the location of where we're going to build it. The top of the screen is Boundary Street, and you probably noticed the multimodal transportation center connected to our parking deck. And it's right at that Plaza elevation, Boundary Street, that the main entrance will commit to the main concourse. And so it is fit nicely right in that section, connecting the main building back to the arena, which will really work well with conferences, conventions, and allow people to go back and forth quite easily. This is the part that, when we started the venture, we didn't really have it all together. But now I can tell you that it is a total mixed-use development. Here you see the arena, the Classic Center itself, and we now have letters of intent from all of these different segments, a hotel partner, someone interested in building out additional parking that would support both the hotel and a senior condo development. We have a corporate entity who is very interested in moving about 250 jobs coming into downtown. We have additional parking to support that, and then still room for future development going forward. Overall, two separate studies came back with these results for the arena in general. It will drive 33 million in new economic impact. And I know many people talk about economic impact, but I think we've got a really good track record when those visitors do come into our community. They have to stay in hotels, they have to eat in restaurants, and in fact, they do spend that money, which helps the small businesses of our community, creating over 600 jobs. And now, our board has allowed me to say that we will pay a living wage for those under our roof. And probably the biggest thing is the new tax revenue that this will drive. Like all of the other projects of the Classic Center, once we build them, we do pay our own way. We don't rely on the general fund to operate it. But it's bigger than that, because beyond just paying its own way, it also generates new tax revenue, significant for you to be able to reinvest in and do other things, both now and in the future, as we continue to march forward. And really important to our industry is that it will drive additional hotel room nights, a really important factor. But I think for me, the biggest thing is that there is something for virtually everyone with the arena. Whether you're interested in music and concerts, we know that at the appropriate size, we can attract 85% of the touring acts that tour the country can fit within the venue that I'm talking about. If you're growing young families, it will attract the young families to downtown. We know of the sporting events that want to come to Athens and want to compete here. And when the children come to compete, they're bringing mom, dad, grandpa, and they're there for three or four days. And certainly, the community events and the larger conventions that want to come into town but just can't due to the size. Overall, what this boils down to is I've been asked to bring my number as low as possible. And I can get to 28 million with the arena. If SPOSS were to give us 28 million, we can find private equity and borrow funds up to 49 million. But I really want you to understand what happens at that number, because yes, we can, but there are some things that you're going to give up. And it took me a while to put all this together. But what we would do is we would actually shrink the size. We would go from 6,000 seats down to 5,000 seats. And probably the thing I need to be most clear about is, once we go down in this model, we can never go back, because we are giving up not only seats, we are giving up the square footage of where those seats would go, all of the square footage of the concourse to support that, the restroom, the facilities, so on and so forth. So once you go down, you're down forevermore. We're also going to have to give up some locker rooms. We would have to give up a large share of our suite inventory, which does make me a bit nervous, because if you know much about arenas, it's the suites that really drive the revenue that can help us continue to pay things back as we go forward. But it can be done. I've checked, not only with the architect, but with the builder. We run numbers ad nauseam. That's pretty much all I've done in the last 24 hours and seconds. But it does work. And how it works, the original project was at 88 million. If we permanently take out 1,000 seats, we take out the suites, the locker rooms, the concourse reduction, the overall construction cost goes down by 13. When you pull into that, the related SPOSS fees, it drives it down another four, bringing the total savings to 17. And the new project cost would come in at 71. We still need the parking to support that, meaning that the bottom line is 76, which is a huge change from where we started. Now, the funding that supports that, we have a letter from Hen and Armstrong. What they would do is actually put up $7 million that would go forward. We have another letter from a developer that would invest $3 million if they were given an opportunity to build the senior housing in the hotel. So we would then take out a loan that was backing those revenue streams. And this has increased from the very first time I showed it to you. It was originally 37, it goes up to 39 in the $28 million ask of SPOSS.
Mr. Kramer, go back one slide. And those, Hen and Armstrong and the developer contribution, those are long-term land leases, correct?
No, these are upfront contributions. Hen and Armstrong, what they would do is commit and front the money to do all of the HVAC in the whole arena. And then they would bill us for chilled water, just like a utility would, going forward. So it's a way to lower your capital upfront, and then it does slightly increase your ongoing expenses going forward. But we've checked that out with a number of venues around the country, and it is something many do. And I think it'll only increase the operation cost by about 3%.
Paul, the loan is a bond, is that correct? Is the loan a bond?
Yes, the loan would actually be something that we would have to do through you and with you in order to accomplish that at the rate that we would need it.
And the $3 million?
The $3 million is a direct gift. We have found someone who has a trust, and what they want to do is grow workforce development. And they're very interested in the hotel as a part of the center. And like I said, they'd be interested in gifting that to us as a one-time gift, so that they can have the opportunity to build those other two projects. It's a really wonderful fit together, and it was somebody that was living right here amongst us, so it worked out really well. I'm going to continue on, just so I can show you all of the options. Now, this is the $28 million option, 26 million. You know, it does change the outcomes, right? So I wanted to put those back up here. No longer would you get 33 million in economic impact as the original project would, because you've reduced the seat count and you've reduced it permanently. So it would bring back the economic impact to about 26 million. You would get 6.9 million in tax revenue as opposed to 8.7. And instead of 122,000 room nights, we're estimating 95,000 room nights. And the job creation would come down from 600 jobs to 480 in this scenario. Second option, and the one that I pray to God that you really think about, is this option. What this does is it leaves the exterior envelope of the arena just the way that we were told to build it. We're still taking out seats, we're still taking out suites, we're still taking out many of the things at the very beginning. But what this option does is preserve the opportunity to put those things back as the community continues to grow down the road. And I'll show you kind of how this works. In this scenario, we start out with the same numbers, right? 88 million. But in this case, we're going to bring the seat count down to 500. We have a promoter partner that runs Madison Square Garden, runs the Rupp Arena, and probably 30 other arenas all around the country. And they have said the ideal thing would be to drop by 500 seats, if there's any way that we can get there. Those seats, we would have the ability to bring back at a later point. We would also look at, this was the architect's recommendation, value engineering, the actual materials that we were looking at from the original piece. And then we take out the suites, the locker rooms. This would still leave us with 10 suites starting out, but again, as we grow, it gives us the ability to put them back. Bring in your total savings down to 10, and the new project cost comes in at 76. That with the parking brings us to $81 million project total. In this case, Hen and Armstrong is still in, the developer contribution is still there, and the revenue streams remain there and remain strong. All of the advantages that really come directly back to you as a commission are there and very strong. $30 million in economic impact, 7.8 in terms of tax revenue, 100,000 new room nights. And just to put that in perspective, if you took every football game that there is, and you added up all the room nights from all the games that come here, it's roughly 36,000 room nights. So with this one move, you are going to really move the needle of the businesses throughout downtown. 540 quality jobs that we are pledging to pay, the 1160 an hour, and average salaries of about 40,000 a year.
Paul, can you go back two slides now, I guess? So on this, you had loan-backed revenue streams being 38 million?
Yes, I didn't have to borrow quite as much money in this particular scenario. And I did stretch it out to 25 years, which made the flow of our cash come in a little bit easier. Had that checked out with our CPA and Brittany. But I think it's pretty awesome. Now, the revenue streams that I want to share with you by building those 300 new parking spaces, currently, we have 700 parking spaces, and we wind up gaining about 700,000 a year off those parking spaces. So I think it's pretty easy to see how we would get to 300. And then the hotel tax, our portion of the hotel tax that we've historically received, if we receive that and only generate 79,000 room nights, we would bring in 390,000 new dollars. Then there is the land lease for the hotel, which would drive $633,000 annually. They would build the parking, and they would pay a land lease on the parking. The corporate parking would come in at $116,000, enabling them to grow and keep their corporate jobs downtown. And then we have the senior development, which would pay a land lease back to us. And then we have the promoter that I mentioned. The Oakview Group has written us a letter that they see value in Athens and in our music scene, and it's a perfect routing. And so they want to invest $5 million in the arena. And that remains even if we take some of those seats out, particularly if we can continue to put them back down the road. Our current caterer has pledged $2 million over the 10 years. And then the naming rights, we have a number of companies that have interest in that. One of the largest, I would say, is the corporation that's looking at coming on to that 5.1. Talked to them just today. They're very interested in coming on. But if we can't find a local naming rights sponsor, the Oakview Group is certain that they can't find us a naming rights sponsor to come on board at that level. The arena pro forma net, two different studies said that we should come out about 1.5 net on the arena operations. And you can see, we've only used 250,000 of that to go towards debt service, which means to you that I'm going to be able to afford to keep that building looking good, as I've done with the Classic Center going forward.
So Paul, just to revisit the loan situation, if we were to take out the bond, the T-SPOSS proportion is, whatever number that is, when you said 37 million, that's a bond that we would have to pay off during the life of T-SPOSS.
You mean SPOSS?
I'm sorry. SPOSS.
B-SPOSS.
And then this is an additional loan that you would be retiring over a period of 20 years.
25, it's the same. 25.
This would be a loan.
Mr. Kramer, you said it's the same.
You're only wanting to borrow 37 million.
That's correct.
But if we took a bond out for the 208 or 33 for the SPOSS revenue, that would be two bonds. I'm just trying to clarify.
Correct. But I think as you look at these revenue streams, they would all be backed with a contract. I already have letters of intent on every single one of them. So it's a pretty safe bet, top to bottom. So I want to dive in a little deeper and show you each one of the component parts of the mixed-use development if I can. Believe it or not, when we built the first parking deck and we built that auto bridge, those of you that have been around know that we sunk the caissons down in Bedrock. And we did that many years ago, 15, 20 years ago, knowing that one day, the market would be able to sport another hotel and that hotel could go directly above that. It's ironic to me, Jack probably drew this 20 years ago, and now it's just kind of coming to fruition. So what it would allow us to do is continue to use our parking deck the way that we've always used it. And then the hotel would actually start on the second level and go up from there. We're envisioning about a 200-room hotel, and the developer that we're talking to has developed other 200-room properties in his portfolio, so feel very comfortable with that. The senior condo living, this too, I think, was drawn some 15 years ago. We continue to be the number-one place to retire, yet nowhere in downtown Athens is there really a significant condo development. And this would be so nice, right there on East Broad. People could walk downtown, have dinner, they could walk to the shows. And they envision 56 to 60 units. And again, they will build the parking that supports that as well. Then on the 5.1-acre tract, just to orient you again, this would be East Broad Street coming down, there's Hickory Street, and there's the multimodal. On the end, it gives us enough room for a large corporation to come in and make their headquarters right there into downtown, leaving them connection to a firefly trail, leaving the water retention area, a park-like area right off the backside, and then creating the parking deck that would support that entity, would also support the arena, and could support future entity going forward. This is not really, we don't have anything in mind specifically for that. But that's about 120, 130,000-square-foot facility that could fit nicely right on that spot. Start to see what it might look like from the street view, the corporate entity. And again, I can't thank Jack enough, because I think he drew every one of my PowerPoint presentations, and he's here tonight, so thank you, Jack. And I know that many of you heard last week from a number of people about our workforce development efforts. And I just want to say, we're building this because we really believe that it will create significant jobs, jobs that are needed in our community, jobs that can connect people with education and really give them a pathway to have a career. And do it as they connect with many of the entities in our community and really build a remarkable place. So that is it from top to bottom. And it's something that we at the Classic Center desperately need. We are turning a lot of business away now. I know it will grow our community. It will really help inspire further development all the way down along the river. It will attract corporate jobs, jobs into downtown, and it will create the kind of jobs that really make a difference, not only in the individual's life, but in their family's life as well. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Questions? Couple minutes for questions for Paul.
Okay, so I just want to give Commissioner Lewis what to explain. He's explaining what you were kind of talking about.
Yeah, he's taking out, in that last scenario, 34 million dollar loan to last for how long?
25 years.
25-year loan. If we were to take whatever money allocated to SPOSS, we might do a bond on that so that we can begin the project, get the money on the table. So that would be another loan. That loan would be retired by SPOSS taxing at revenue. We would have to retire that loan by the end of the SPOSS period, whatever type that is. Okay, so that's the two ones.
The other one will be retired by revenue.
Right, revenue, yeah, revenue from Classics.
But we would be back.
We would be back.
That's correct, yeah.
And I guess, so a question for staff, but also for you. So, I mean, really what we're talking about with this project is dedicating the SPOSS funding of either somewhere between 28 and 30, I guess, is what we're talking about here. But also...
34 is the one that I'm...
34 is your sweet SPOSS. Oh, there you go. But also, and we're also talking about giving county of land to you for this project.
That's correct.
I wondered, because one thing I didn't see is, like, do we have a value of what that land is valued at?
Right now downtown land, depending on the nature of it, is trading for between a million and a million and a half dollars an acre.
And how much an acreage that is?
5.1.
5.1, okay.
Now, the one thing I do want to clarify is, yes, while on paper you're giving it to us so that we can make these deals with the private sector, it's your land. And I think sometimes that's lost in the whole shuffle.
It's still there.
The Classic Center is your Classic Center. It's owned by you, it's owned by the people of Athens. The land is owned by you and always will be. You merely lease it to us to give us an opportunity to maximize deals like we just saw on the table.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to imply somehow they're giving it anyway, but it's an investment of an additional, say, $5 million in our land investment that we are buying in on, so it's, yeah.
How long will the land leases for the developer, if you were looking at?
They would go the full term of our deal, yeah, at least. I mean, if they're going to build it with their own money and do all that, they'd want it 25, 30 years going forward. In the past, the land that you provided us, you've provided us for 50 years. We're about halfway through right now.
So on the 34-million-dollar one, which you said basically you could build the shell, you'd have to cut back on some of the seeding and other things, but you could come back and put those in later. Therefore, went to, according to plan, in terms of your revenues and all the rest of it, when would you see being able to, what's kind of the timeframe for being able to come back and add those?
You know, I think if things went super well and exactly as planned, you could be looking at six years down the road, being able to put that back. I think if it took a little longer, then we might need a little longer. But as many of you know, every time that I've said that we were going to do something in terms of number of events or whatnot, typically, as we're cutting the ribbon, I'm introducing you to the people that are going to be bringing those groups, and this would be no different. I know exactly who those groups are that want to come, but I don't have the venue to bring them. If I have the venue, I know the groups will come. If the groups come, then everybody's going to be happy.
And the number of events that you had up there, those are the minimums you're counting on, correct?
Yes, those are, and it's an important distinction. Those are events, right? We count the Methodist Conference that was here for four days, had 58 student beverage events for 3,000 people. We count that as one event. So when you see the numbers that are up there, remember, many of those are for three days that we're counting. These are new events. Yes, sir. Now, to be fair, on some of the conventions, for example, we had the Baptist Youth Conference once, but they came with 7,000 attendees. And in the building that I currently have, it was crazy. So they want to come back. FFNA, years ago, came to us, Future Farmers of America, and they want to come back to Athens, where the biggest ag school there is. But they can't fit in our venue. So there are some that have been here before, and they're certainly going to come back. Yes?
Paul, thanks for explaining this, since I missed the first time.
You bet.
Help me with the seats. Having great experiences in Rupp Arena, I grew up in that area, they are currently renovating and taking away seats. So are the seats that you're talking about, the current trend of the size of seats?
Yes, ma'am. If you think about arenas that we've all been to over the years, typically, even 10 years ago, they would... years ago, they would build an arena, 12,000 or 15,000 seats. Why? Because the touring acts that were going around the country could fill those. Today, 80%, 85% of all touring acts in this country don't fill more than 6,000 seats, which is why two separate people said build 6,000 seats.
And so when you're talking about seats, those are the seats, like especially with this pitch right here, if there's something happening on the arena floor, there aren't seats.
That's correct.
So that puts you to that number. But if you've got something like that with a stage, you're increasing your participant number by them being on the floor.
That's exactly right. Kind of the golden number, right, is 7,500. That's the golden number for concerts, right now.
That you get with people with the temporary seating on the floor space.
Exactly right. So they're going to fill those 5,000, 6,000 seats that are permanent, and then they're also going to fill up the floor for concerts. And when the concert is over, those folks are going to walk into downtown Athens.
Oh, is this image in any way related to what-
It is. The reason I chose this is the very architect that helped me fit this venue on land that we had for a go has also built this. And the neat thing about this, when you walk in, you're walking in at the upper end of the bowl, and that is true of our arena, and it gives you a very dramatic look coming down.
What's the capacity of this one?
It's slightly larger than, do you remember-
This is a 9,000.
9,000.
Where is it?
It's in Pennsylvania.
Yep. And your budget includes sound system and all this stuff?
Does, does. And that's the other thing that we said to this architect from the beginning, we want to design this first and foremost for musical. We're a music town, that's why we're doing it, and so the acoustics in here have got to be outstanding. You know, the sports is almost a secondary component to us.
This might be opening a counter, which I don't intend to, but if we were to build this, or if you were to build this, is there any possibility of partnering with UGA over the Georgia Music Hall of Fame?
Absolutely, and I'm glad you asked. I should have thought to say, and I'm- We did make that presentation to the commission early on and said that that would be something we would love to do. We would love to build it right into the concourse, because the collection is sitting there in boxes right now, not being viewed by anyone, and it would do two things. One, it would aesthetically make that concourse very attractive. Two, it would really expose the great things of music of Georgia to all of our visitors and guests, and yes, that is quite possible. And I have called over to the Special Collections Library, and they would love to have that happen, so absolutely.
So it would be possible that people would have come to Athens, that it can be-
An animal attraction, yes.
All right, so, just put a low number on, why not do the economy go to tank and the corporate job split out, and the SPOSS crisis, what happens with that money alone at that one?
It's a great question. That corporate entity that I had on the end, I don't have any money in my project for that, zero. The hotel would contractually be bound legally to pay us that land lease going forward. They would have built the hotel with their money, they would have built the garage with their money, and they would pay us a land lease on the hotel and on the garage, and it would be contractually bound. So they would be required to pay us that back. Same thing with the senior condo development, same contractual thing would happen there, and we would tie them up for a minimum of the 25 years alone, but they probably want it for 50 years because they've made the major investment going forward.
But the absolute safety that everything else falls apart, we would have a plan in place to build, say it's $20 million, $20 million arena shell, if that was what we came to, all of the funding fell through.
Yes, let's just say that you went with the 34 billion-dollar package, just for that. If you were to go at that spot, and if at the end of the day, I couldn't get these land leases tied up, and we couldn't contractually bind them, and our attorney couldn't get them locked in where you felt comfortable, then the other question is, could I build a public assembly facility on that land for that amount of money alone? And the answer to that is absolutely, I've already done it once, I guarantee you we could do it again. When you look at our exhibit hall just as it is now, we call it an arena, right? We brought in the telescopic seating, we brought in the ice, we've done things in our exhibit hall that nobody else has ever done, and we've done huge concerts in there as well. The big problem with that is I'm now turning away regular conventions that want to come in, I'm turning away events from this community because I got ice sitting in there, you know? But when you have a real arena with a real ice floor, I can go from special event to ice hockey to basketball overnight. The turnover is not three days, man, it's night after night after night. And so it's a wonderful, wonderful asset for us. Yes?
But Paul, isn't the other highlight of this topic, even if you're doing another one like the other one, the other one is, I don't want to say terrible, but it's not good for music.
It is not.
And this one's going to be spec'd for that, where the other one, the music was added, and that's why this one-
Everything with the other one was added. I mean, to tell you the truth, when we brought the telescopic seating, and every time we set that up, we have six inches of play, every single time my team sets that up. We have six inches that we can be off when we put the floor down, otherwise the seeding doesn't work. The egress doesn't work, the fire chief walks in, walks around, says, nope, this doesn't work, do it again. So, yeah, it is not the ideal way to do what we're doing. This is ideal. And the other thing, and I'm looking right at you because I know you love education, so I'm going to just blurt it out, not only does this drive revenue for you, the commission to have to do things with as we go forward, right? You're gaining that revenue, and I'm not, I'm not creating this because we've already done it once. You've got 5.1 million dollars from what's there right now, that you now have the ability to do whatever you want to do with it. But the other thing is, as this goes on, your school system benefits. So it isn't just you, it isn't just the taxes that come back to you, it's you and our school system. I don't know of another project that can help our school system, create jobs, have something for everybody in the entire community, and pay its own way while we're developing more attractions in and around our downtown. Yeah, Paul, probably so.
Yes, sir. So I like that you brought up the education part, and you've obviously been up for challenges. I appreciate the living wage, y'all put it in place, had an MIT living wage calculator, which is good, because when we're talking about creating jobs, it's not just any jobs. We're creating property-level, poverty-wage jobs, we're not doing much for this community. And one of the biggest hindrances, and one thing that we're dealing with the rest link here as the commission, that's come up over and over again, is childcare. And I know this seems completely disconnected, but I'll get us there. And, I mean, right now with the prosperity package, we're looking at majority of that $4 million potentially going towards childcare, putting that much money in there. We have a massive shortage of spots, we don't even have enough spots to be able to have all the kids go to childcare at this point. And if we are talking about workforce development, one of the biggest hurdles for people to be able to get into the workforce and be able to move up, to move their way up, is childcare. So, that all brings me to, I would really like to see if you think that you could somehow put in place, and I'm also holding the same challenge to the county for our space allocation item for the municipal building, I'd love to see a workforce childcare center be provided for these jobs that we're creating here, so that we can make sure that people are not only being paid there, but they actually are able to work. And if we're going to be investing, at this point, you know, somewhere between-
34 million percent.
Somewhere between 28 plus the 5 million of the land that we're putting in place, because, I mean, it is an investment, and we're going to be cementing ourselves into that project, that's how we're going to do it, those are the jobs we're going to be creating. I want to make sure that we're creating jobs and not only pay a living wage, but also create the culture that we want here, which is a culture that actually values childcare and ensures that it's there for that workforce. So I would like to see if you could create a childcare center also for your workers, the Classic Center workers, first and foremost, but also for those other partners that we have coming into those other buildings, for them too, because this is a long-term investment, we're talking decades here. And if we're not creating jobs that have childcare built into them, 10, 12 years from now-
Here's what I can tell you, if I may, if this is to address it. Many of you probably know that we have created the Bread for Life program. We actually write and get the grant for the Bread for Life program, and we just retool that entire program because of exactly what you're talking about. Because you can't help people get out of there unless you can find a way to connect them to childcare. And currently, the grant that we have through RDC does provide revenue so that our students can have childcare, so they can focus on their way out. But it's even bigger than that. We wrote for that grant and received it, and we are helping people right now through that effort. We wrote for the grant that started the Athens Tech Hospitality Program and received it. We also started the Piedmont Four-Year Degree Program, and now through our foundation, we have started a fund that I have personally raised $540,000 to help people, connect them to education, and to help them with childcare. When I tell you that our board is committed to this, Tim, they are beyond committed. They have named Shannon McCullough our Director of Education, so he can work with the employees that we have and continue to lift them up out of poverty. Hospitality is the way that we can do that, and we can connect them to childcare, and we can find ways to do unique things and write for grants. I believe we can.
Do you think we can have that in our, in the document for the public, or what you called it, that you gave us?
Yeah, public-
Statement?
Was it?
Statement of public, yeah.
Project statement.
I would commit to you that we would write for those grants and do everything that we can to help connect them. I don't have the end solution for you as I stand here today.
Sure, I know you don't have words here, but I guess I would love to see it within, but before we take a vote here, because, I mean, I met with my constituents, and they are excited about the idea of jobs, but again, this thing comes up, it's like, how are we going to directly build this workforce? It can't be through trickle-down anymore, so.
Tim, can I add something to that real quick?
Please, go ahead.
And just to add specifically, just to add specifically to- In your plans, we're building this parking deck, and a lot of parking decks we've built have the mixed use at the bottom. Is, I know you don't want to get in a childcare business, but can you build a facility? Can you build a facility for somebody who you can contract with or do something with within the bottom part of the parking deck and read in the top? It doesn't matter?
It's in the bottom.
The bottom. And I would suggest we look at the same thing for our judicial center when we go to build that.
Can I see there too?
Would you be able to commit space within the parking deck to build-
Absolutely, but I would need somebody who would build it and know how to run it, because I do many things, but I do not do that. I don't see you doing that. I don't, I don't have that.
Of course. I know the idea here, you know.
Yeah, I always like to say that this has not been my favorite project, SPOSS, period. And I want to keep saying it because I do support your proposal, but it is a regressive tax, SPOSS, period. And I think when we talk about childcare and wages, we also have to not put that weight on one particular entity, because we also need a workforce that can, that can be trained and managed to hold a job. So it's not one particular entity. I'm really uncomfortable even with your presentation tonight, because people feel like you're getting another bite of the apple, but at the end of the day, your proposal brings us revenue. And all this stuff on there, I like, it looks good, but I don't know how people expect us to do all of that off a penny off of poor people. So I'm not always supportive of SPOSS, period, but if we want to go for it, let's make sure we have a workforce that is able to work, maintain a job, and grow. Now, this whole thing about starting and livable wages, I started working as a waitress. I got so excited with them little tips I brought home.
Yep.
But I moved on. We, you know, I'm not suggesting low-wage jobs, but we really have to teach people how to start somewhere. We need to teach people how to move up and give them those opportunities, and then we got to teach people how to financially manage their resources.
Amen.
If we pay somebody a $40,000 job, and they're going out and doing everything else but taking care of their business, that does not help our economy. We need to teach people how to shop in Athens, to keep our money in our community, and not have to run to Atlanta for everything. So there's a bigger picture out here. So while I hear all the arguments, I do want to go on record that I don't particularly love SPOSS as a means of revenue, but compared to everything else that has been on this list, that we talk as family-oriented and fun, we got to pay for it. And the poor people that we are asking cannot keep paying these penny taxes. So there's got to be some revenue. I don't want to put nobody on the spot, but we really need to think about that as we move forward. And so I support childcare, I support livable wages, I'm the first person, but there's a step behind that, and if we keep asking one entity to be responsible for everything, I don't think that's right, and I don't think it's fair.
Thank you. Patrick, can you handle?
Well, I just want to hold off on the, I'm not sure I phrase this right. I like the childcare component, but people that I spoke to about poverty, their main issue is transportation and just soft skills. I would just hate to, I like the idea, but I just hate the muddy the water of the project to just put specific language in the project just for childcare, when holistically, the issue of poverty and the situation that people that I spoke with, a lot of them have were moms who take care of their kids, that, you know, I just like to keep it smooth and straightforward and just focus on, you know, bringing those, letting them reach out.
On that same topic, first of all, can you, who's recording the meeting?
Just your-
Your staff.
I think it's always good for people to know when the recording is happening in a room that they're, I just think that's-
Don't have to learn illegally, though. Don't happen illegally in Georgia, though.
I think it's just maybe for us in a room to know that somebody's recording it. I think it's just the right thing to do. So, back to talking about childcare, that's education, and they, we are helping with this kind of penny, getting those rooms for the early head start, for earlier learning. And I think that it's naive to think that people want, that there might be a high demand onsite at a place that's hospitality-oriented for childcare. I think we want, just piggybacking what you said, Patrick, a lot of people want their kid towards their home, not towards their work and the variety of things. So, I mean, we're talking about market that hasn't been studied, and I know you've been studying this part here, but-
I've had my head in the cost for a good little last-
Anyways, it's apples and oranges, I think, with this topic, but.
If we're going to have some wording that addresses childcare or transportation or anything, maybe the wording can encompass to target that 38% poverty rate.
Right.
I think we need to be reminded of that every time we make a decision, and so maybe if there's some wording that could give examples of what we're talking about, because that also will help us as a commission to be able to measure the success of that targeted area of 30. There are so many things that contribute to that 38% poverty rate. We're talking about mental health issues, we're talking about substance abuse, we're talking about felony reentry, so there's a bit, and I do know that the Bread of Life identifies with that group of people. So it's not one thing that is going to, you know, drop our poverty rate. So maybe there is language that we can encompass that, so everybody can see that.
I very much appreciate that. I don't think it's- I don't think it's one size fits all. I don't think one thing can do it all, but I do think this combined with that Classics Center really is a learning lab, and I've seen it again and again and again, lift people up. People who've walked in at a beginning wage, and now they are my management and my department heads, and it happens again and again and again. So I do believe it will help us.
Couple more questions before we look at the other elements of the SPOSS package at large. Russell, Jared.
After I heard Commissioner Handy ask Mr. Kramer if it would be feasible to set aside some time and energy for a childcare room within one of these buildings, and you responded affirmatively, I thought that was, I thought we were good there. We are talking about a $4 million prosperity package that's going to have childcare be the dominant component, and if we're about to spend $34 million here, I don't see an issue. It seems consistent to me that we would carry that priority through and have the Classics Center be the model. I'm not, I don't think anybody here is suggesting Mr. Kramer go into the childcare business, but, I mean.
It was up to a challenge.
You're, you're working with a senior living developer, you're working with recruiting and corporate headquarters, you're, you're working with parking, you've got your, you've got a lot of irons in the fire here, and if.
We'd like to add childcare to that.
And Mr. Handy is already.
As long as you're not asking me to run it, I'm sure that I'd be happy to take people that would.
We actually heard you eat small children, so we don't.
I'm really good with kids, but not that big, so.
Well, and to, you know, and to think about the hotel to be there, a corporate headquarters may be there, Classic Center's right there, there's a lot of employees that work there, making a priority part of the discussion.
I know there was a children's museum that was looked at, and there is one space in our Foundry Building that remains available, and I know that Tress Small was looking at that very seriously, and had already raised private sector dollars, and so that would probably be the first place that I would go and talk with her and see. And now, our newest board member has a great deal of expertise in that area.
Yeah.
Jennifer is here with us today, so I think I've got some resources to reach out to.
Yeah, I'm just happy we're having the conversation.
Absolutely.
You know, this, this is a good direction for us.
Let me connect three dots. Classic Center, possibly childcare. We're going to be doing the site selection for the new Judicial Center. Someone mentioned childcare for, yeah. The site might be there.
Yeah.
So there's an opportunity to really, you know, get some synergy for that project.
Yeah, I mean, and these are like, this has been studied, we have solid numbers of the shortage of spaces that we have here in Athens, start counting, 20, almost 27,000 people in Georgia have cited they had to quit a job, not take a job, or really change their job because of a problem with childcare. And we're caught about creating 600 more jobs in an area that does not have a childcare facility anywhere nearby. So I think it would be smart to add this into the project.
So if he adds it into the project, does that get y'all feeling better about the 30, no, I'm trying to get to the bottom line, does that get you feeling better about $34 million?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if that makes him feel better, then I feel better, because I was already feeling good, so.
Although this is a regressive tax, this particular tax generator and tax collector is collecting taxes predominantly not from our citizens.
Right.
And, and, and that's, and that's the only reason that I am even a little bit supportive with all the other projects that were on there. That is totally where I am on this. And I don't want to, and I think this probably is a work session, so please don't not think that I'm opposed to childcare. I just want to make sure that we all understand that it's a lot, I work with folk every day, and I know childcare is not the, always the number one issue. There's some other things that people are going through, and we need to get that, and I did think, if we're able to do this with you, Paul, we will set an example of how we work with all our other institutions in this community. We wish to set an example of how we work with UGA, with the school district, with hospitals. There needs to be a model that we are all following, and it seems in the past, everybody's been doing their own little thing. So I do agree with the childcare and even the conversation, but I wanted to make sure that this, we can get a lot more out of this down the road. So that was my point.
Awesome. Any kind of significant new areas of exploration that folks would like to look at, the Classic Center, before we look at the Project Rittlard, the SPOSS for Rittlard?
Paul, thank you, appreciated. All right, next element just has to do with some of the realities of financing. If you've been paying attention to the market, one of the things that you've seen is that financing costs were anticipated a year ago to go up. We're looking at increased interest rates for borrowing, and fortunately, we're in a better position now than we thought we may be, and so that has an impact on our debt service prospects. So Keith, the employer, can you talk a little bit about that?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody being here. And I'll go, just real quick, Mayor already mentioned that these first three items, these are really the keys of what we're trying to get tonight, because we need to put this into the package for the vote on July 18th, and that's the maximum amount of money we want to bond, the project statements and the list, and then the values that go over and go with them, because that has to be written into that general report. And so we will talk about these other items here briefly, but that's the real goal, the purpose for this work session, is to get those three items addressed. Revised bond amounts, we have had some changes in that. The original quote in 20, that we had in the document, was put together 2018 for roughly 115 million in bonding, and we were carrying a placeholder of 21, even as of Friday. I thought that number was good, but we have gotten new information. The interest rates have dropped since November, not since Friday, but since November. I don't know if I understand any of the reports that I had Friday, so that's where that comes from. So the amounts and terms have changed since that original quote, and it's really still just our assumptions of what we think you want to bond.
Keith, when will the, when will the term, when will the interest rate be locked down? At what point in time?
When Mayor Commission tells us they're ready for us to go sell bonds on the program. Probably that could even, generally, if the referendum passes in November, we would come back in somewhere between December and April with an implementation schedule of the project, when they'd be funded, over what tiers, we'd get information from you about how you want, when you want to fund the Judicial Center, space modernization, are we going to use a piece of land down here that we already have, we got to go do. There's lots of variables that factor into when do we fund the projects throughout the life of the program. So we would work with you on that after the referendum passes, until tax collection time starts in April usually. T-SWOT, we move it a little faster than that. It's somewhere probably the first part of the year that we do that implementation schedule, then we'll know how you want to fund the projects, and we'll know what to go bond and when, and then we would go out and take proposals for that bonding and lock that in.
Because this would be a series of bonds that would be floated in project chunks or.
It could be, but every time you go out and sell the bonds, you have a cost. You have a fixed cost you're going to pay every time. So what we've recommended, or what we're saying, at least for now, go out and bond, we've set 127 million, you could tell us something different, but what we selected was 127, we get you, it cost you about 16 million in interest expense that we've got a plan for. We picked 127, that kind of gets, there's, we looked at a couple of different scenarios, when we are guessing when you might want to fund that new-built Judicial Center, when you want to fund affordable housing, and how that funding would play out over time, and also with and without whether or not Classic Center was in there. So given the new spreadsheet saying Classic Center might likely be in there, we increased that 127 to help give some vision for another project like that.
Keith, I have a question, since you brought it up. I wasn't suggesting that you change the interest rates from Friday to today, because I spoke to Keith on Friday. He was there, it serves at about $21 million being the number. And what I was suggesting, and I was fine with that, because I actually, we actually lowered this number within the projections based on the amount we were loading, and I brought it back up after talking to you. And what I was suggesting is that perhaps we should have looked more on this at the front end before it went to the Citizens Committee, and before, you know, you've even, we've even changed the projections of what, how much money we're collecting in SPOSS. So with this 5 million plus the 10 million that we proposed revisions of SPOSS collections, that's $15 million that the Citizens Committee didn't have the chance to weigh in on, that we, that we could have figured out while they were working on these projects. That's why I was upset with it, because, because y'all get, this is your job, to figure these numbers out for us. If you provide us with information at the, at two hours before a meeting that we're supposed to decide on, that's not, that's not a good way to do business for the people we represent. I just don't, I don't like that, and I want to make that clear. You made the comment, you opened the door for me to rebut what you said.
Right.
And I'm saying, so that's just, I just want to make that clear. But I'm glad you found extra money, but I don't, I don't like the fact that, that it's not, it should have been found months ago.
So we're going to bond, you're recommending we bond 127 million, that bond will probably be floating, I guess is the verb.
Right.
Sometime spring, early summer of next year, and that's when the interest rate will be set.
And, and it also, that would set, we, we've looked at a couple of different scenarios, whether you bond over time, where you sit multiple sales, and David could quite explain it better than I can, but ultimately, what we got back to, the best option for that we're looking at right now is bond whatever amount upfront, put it in an interest-earning account, spend it as we need it on those projects, and then also earn the interest on it, and it'll offset some of that debt service. But we can't, we can't bang on that interest earned based on what we're putting into the projects, that would just be extra money that could be allocated.
And my last, sorry, but if, if y'all could just kind of flesh out that exchange that just happened, just checking.
The exchange was, I called Keith on Friday asking if the $21 million was, was a good number, and the response was yes.
Okay.
Obviously, markets change.
Federal change from Friday to Wednesday.
And we would always wish to know as soon as possible, but what was good is that we know now, and fortunately, the dollar's moving in a positive direction.
And my, my comment, Russell, was that we should have known, that we should have figured this out earlier, so that the Citizens Committee could have had an opportunity to not only look at this 5 million, but the $10 million that's been added based on, based on revised SPOSS collections.
Okay. So I do have a concern that if, if it's fluctuated by $5 million, thankfully in a positive direction for us, though, in the last, what, roughly a year? We're talking about actually taking out this bond in a year. So are we talking about the, the fluctuation could be another $5 million in either direction? I mean, that is a little concerning if that is, that fluctuation's happening in the amount of time that we're talking about.
It very well could go back up. Interest rates change all the time in every dollar.
Right.
And in terms of our ability to kind of bond that dollar value, whatever the dollar value should be, we can do that, David, as soon as the referendum passes, is that correct?
Yeah, we would do all the preliminary work before the bond referendum is, is up for vote, and then if it's positive, if it passes, then it's basically doing all the backend work, and right now, we're estimating that we would close somewhere in February.
Okay, okay.
Andy?
So whenever I've taken out a lot of, you know, lifestyle, slight obligations and that kind of stuff, you usually have the option to buy down the interest rate? Is that possible with bonds like this, or is that not possible?
Well, for us, because we're issuing bonds, you know, the interest rate is going to be based on, number one, our bond rating. Number two is going to be on the term of the bond itself, how many years we're looking at, and buying it down, no, you don't, you don't buy it hand. It's, you sell the bond, well, I don't need to know all that complicated stuff, but it's basically the market rate at the time you go to close, the market rate.
Whatever prime it is.
No, it's whatever the municipal market might frame it at that time.
And this bond is primarily to jumpstart SPOSS construction?
Yes.
So if the interest, so the contingency is if the interest rate goes up really high, we might bond less and slow down the SPOSS schedule.
That would be able to get our best construction costs. Yeah, too. That's the balance. Because if you, if you delay, if you borrow less, because the interest rate's, you may end up paying more, because you can't build as much early on, and by the time you get to the end of the world, construction costs have gone up because the economy's so hot that conflict.
Yeah, and at this point, lumber's up about 50% from January of '18, so there's lots of vagaries, obviously, in the product market, supply chain market.
And one of the factors to do a fixed dollar of SPOSS is we do have to do bonds on some portion of the program. Otherwise, you're, consolidated government's allowed to go fixed dollar versus time, but one of those bonds is to have your obligations bond as part of it. Doesn't matter what part. You've got some big projects you're looking at in this program, affordable housing, space modernization, and collections of starting at around 22 million a year, interest, couple of percentage every year. To do those big projects, if you don't bond something upfront, you're going to be waiting till you collect, collect those funds to be able to do the big projects. We've already talked about a little bit, we just went through a couple of things that hand out, that they're really irrelevant back down to where we're at, scenario four. The best one we looked at was doing, right now, doing 127. Again, that's based on some rough calculation, where we think y'all are going to tell us to go with the bonding and the spending on projects after the referendum passed.
So that's 2, 2 million for space modernization?
Well, this, this is just one particular way you could break up 127. You might put 20 million upfront on affordable housing if you needed it, spend the rest out of collections as you go, maybe 10 million on upfront, I'm sorry, this, spent 10 million upfront and then another 60 million in 2021, but we still bonded upfront, and then the remainder of the project funds would go out of collections. You know, one key thing about bonding this, and I think it's back on this chart, is you got to pay this first. When you go out and bond, the first 13, if you do 127, the first 13.2 million of collections has to go to pay off that bond, and then the rest of collections can go to the other projects as you collect through the life of the program.
And Keith, when we bond, kind of within the statement that goes in front of the voters, we can be very generic about the bond, it's just a dollar amount of the bond, we don't have to name the specific projects or the bonding schedule or any of those.
That's correct. We've confirmed that with the Bond Council. We do have to give a maximum dollar amount, we do have to set the maximum interest rate that we would pay. I think in T-SWOT, we set the max that we pay at 6%. This is based on a lower percentage. But that gives us some flexibility, and then it does rise for some unexpected reasons.
Do you remember what the rate was on T-SWOT?
6%.
The actual rate?
The actual rate, if I remember, was around 3%.
All right, so that would count as.
But we didn't, we didn't bond that 8 million in T-SWOT, we went out and got a bank, just a bank bond. T-SWOT allows that, SPOSS does not.
It might be consistent.
Yeah. So with that about that updated on the revenue course, to move into really the meat of the item, you have in front of you, and you got emailed electronic and the hard copy, I list the project statements first. This, the edits that you see with the gray scales and strike throughs are edits that are being based on what was issued last publicly was for the public hearing, so anything that's changed from that, it's, we either got, it's what we thought we heard from comments from you, or what has been added, projects been added. from comments from you, or what has been added, projects being added back. These are still open for discussion, of course, but I will say, these statements block in what you can and can't do. You try, the goal of the statement is to be specific enough that you know what you want to do, but not so specific that if something changes, that you don't have some flexibility in there. And generally, you don't write policy into the project statement. You're talking about your capital projects, and I would try to caution you against putting policy issues within the project statements, because, you know, policies change, and this is, you're talking an 11-year program, you want to give yourself as much flexibility as possible.
I think if we're ready to talk about some of these, you know, number, the first one, Project Five, we are putting policy in there. I don't agree with it. The renovated municipal building will allow the construction of approximately 10. Why do we need the number 10?
That's the second consolidation of some or many.
Right.
First page.
First page.
First page.
And I think if you look through these, they do set policy, Keith, as far as what y'all crossed out. I mean, an example, I'll just go to Beechhaven. You know, you cross out page six, examples of eligible subprojects, or amenities could include. So you can cross out one of the major parts of it, the multi-use bridge, multi-use trails. I mean.
The reason some of those are marked out are because of dollar values that were cut?
I understand, but you don't have to cross them out. They can stay in there, and you can decide upon what goes back in there once these projects come back to the mayor commission. When they're crossed out, y'all, they're crossed out.
I'm glad you pointed that out, because the bridge is a part of the.
So kind of with that sense of openness in mind, just for functional terms, what if we could do the pages of this document? And that way, kind of as we see elements that we want to certainly be included, or that we want to make sure, kind of as in Mike's discussion, we're not for stalling, you know, we look at that language. And so just beginning on the first page.
I have a question that brought up a topic before we do that.
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Mr. John.
I have a quick question. So on these project descriptions, are, I guess what I would call wiggle words, like, such as, does that give us sufficient wiggle room? That if for some reason we don't have enough money, or because the cost goes up, or whatever, that we can still, these still pass legal, my stuff?
I think we could very easily take these descriptions. I was looking at, I was going to pull up some language. I think we can make this a little more general. I think it needs to be a little more generalized in this project. Have enough specificity that the project's described, but I think we can improve it, and I'd be happy to do that, and without changing the substance of it, make sure that I think we can give ourselves more flexibility, I think, to do it. Absolutely.
I mean, my tendency is to be.
And I agree with the commissioner, that language concerns me about this renovated municipal building, allowing consolidation of possibly 10. I'm not sure that needs to be in this project description, because what if your department's changed? What if you decide you don't want to do that? We can still accomplish that without having that degree of specificity. So I, and I'm not that in time to read. We just are meeting the first time yesterday afternoon, but I think we could very easily, without changing the substance, we could move it.
I don't want to do wordsmithing, if we can avoid.
No, but what I do want to do is kind of hit what may be some significant issues of either overspecificity or.
I'm anxious for the attorney to have his hand in before we do.
I agree. I would like, let's just go kind of page, and if you see any significant things, and I wouldn't anticipate too many, I know system editor wanted to add up.
I just wanted to point out very briefly that if you see language that's been crossed out and you don't desire for it to cross out, please let us know. We went through it with a different rationale, and both Keith and David have kept the numbers in mind, but ultimately, we're taking guidance from you, and ultimately, the attorney will go through it. So it's not that we're telling you what has to be in there.
Yeah, we know that.
We just had a different rationale.
And prior to that, he has been through a couple of different times, but he's still no longer here.
Well, I just wanted to finish what I was going to say. I mean, you know, I've been through this several times already as commissioner, and in my experience, a less specific, I mean, you've got to have something that tells people who are voting on this roughly what it's about, but I think the more specific we get, the more we get into a situation where, I mean, there'll be projects that we have not been able to do because of the way that this.
It's to do a tighter.
Yeah, so my preference is to have something that's sufficiently detailed, that it tells people what they're voting on, but is also sufficiently non-specific that it gives flexibility should the economy change, should the nature of the project change, should the nature of our needs change, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I personally, I know that our previous attorney has gone through this, but we now have a new attorney. I personally would prefer to have our attorney have some opportunity to go through this and perhaps for him to wordsmith some of this, and then it come back to us, because I can't imagine anything worse than 11 of us kind of wordsmith this right in.
And that was going to be my suggestion. This is my first steelized pipe. Slos, les, slos. I'm speaking French. And I really think that if Attorney Drake had the opportunity to give us something, I would feel more comfortable. We, you know, it's 11 of us, like you said, and I really do not want to spend the rest of my evening in the debate room.
I didn't anticipate that that exercise would take long. Let's do this. Shall we say in general terms, you know, we're looking for language that doesn't block us into a specific version of a project?
Yeah, just, I think some of them, well, some of them need to be.
Well, obviously, we're not talking about wanting, you know, we're talking about some specific thing, but what we want is a breadth of flexibility around each of these projects, and Mike made sort of a good example of that around Beechhaven. We don't want to take out trails if, when we actually come to expenditure of those dollars, we may want trails. But can I say this, Kelly, if you don't mind? So, but I do think, as you're looking through this, attorney, Mr. Attorney, is to remain true to what the project statements were that the citizens looked at. I mean, you know, for example, you know, all of a sudden, we've changed the Jackson Street Art Walk to the Art Walk Project.
The Jackson Street.
It's the Jackson Street Art Walk Project.
It was only trying to give you some opportunity in case in a year, 11 years, that street takes.
The citizens are voting on the SPOS trajectory.
Well, I actually agree with the mayor. I do think it'd be helpful, I don't want to wordsmith it, but to hear that concern you just said about the Jackson Street Art Project, y'all have looked at this. I think if we could go through it, not say words for English word, but saying, if there are, so we point out the example about the citizens that said that this renovated municipal building, allowing consolidation, that's a policy that I know is good. Excellent to hear that. It'd also be good for me to know, because I haven't had the background, you're concerned about actually spring up the Jackson Street.
Art Project.
Art Project. So who could, yeah, I don't know if all y'all have it, we can kind of go through each one. I think it'd be helpful to me to look at it and to our SPOS project coordinators and staff.
Well, and that's the one that popped out at the municipal 10. Certainly, certainly when we get to stuff like Holland, I don't think we ought to be taken out. I mean, make that general, because I don't think we ought to be taken out at this point, whether or not this money's going to go toward bleachers.
Well, let's start, I think we should, let's start Project Five. Y'all expressed one concern, and I agree with that. As you've had a chance to look through it, are there other concerns?
That's the only one I have for that.
I just, I don't want us to get into these specific buildings, and so if we could say, you know, we'll allow the consolidation of departments.
Yeah, that's.
Period.
Right. That's how I would make that change.
So Project 32, it says.
I don't know, we hit the orange here.
All right, so Project Five, I have a certain concern, and I think that's very wise, because operational concern, it may change, it may not actually be 10, it may change, so I think having a lot of flexibility is excellent, but it still needs the intent of the doc. How about Project Repete Athens Clark County Quarterback?
That one, that one says including elderly family and single-family developments or redevelopments.
See, I might say including but not limited to.
Yes.
I think that would give them more flexibility.
Yes.
That's a change I, if I was looking at.
Wasn't there at one point a language included that was meant to assuage some concerns about displacement in the process of developing these?
Yes, there was.
Can we get that back?
Oh, it was in.
It's never been, it's a mistake, and y'all talked about it, but it's.
Let's explain it to.
It's never been.
Okay, so there were concerns about one-to-one displacement and return of residents that may be living in, developing that be redeveloped. We don't want displacement.
Well, the mayor and I spoke about that, his concern, your concern, I had as a group today. I think as, when we go to do the actual project itself, they'll probably, they'll be dinner going to agree with our partners in that. I think that'd be a more appropriate place to address that. Mayor's already.
But our citizens are very concerned about.
Yeah, and so I wonder if the staff, if they need to know.
One of the issues that arose in that particular instance, because I helped to write this one, is that some of the funding that's anticipated is federal funding, specifically HUD funding. HUD has its own set of rules, so we don't get to put our words into it. It has to be federal wording and federal code regulations. So there's not a whole lot of flexibility there. So I think the attorney would be more familiar with what's required with the federal party. We don't want to further limit ourselves.
Ma'am Commissioner, that you're going to have an opportunity, when the project moves forward, there'll be other documents that have to be approved by this commission for that project to move forward. And I think you can address that concern then, and we can also make sure, and we talked about that with staff as we were preparing for this, that we don't find ourselves in a situation where the citizens are voting on something that we can't do legally because federal grants are involved. But I feel confident it'll come back to this table. This is not the last vote on this particular project as that affordable housing element. So it's going to be a very complex project. There'll be agreements for this, this commission to approve, time to, and I already understood from the mayor that was absolutely central part of this commission's concern with this morning, that you wanted to address that displacement issue. I mean, Mr., when the mayor told me that this morning, to make sure I had that addressed.
Do you think we, there's like, again, this is a challenge, whenever you go through this.
We could, to put in here to the extent allowed by law.
Sure, yes. I think what the language we had before was saying that we're going to prioritize this one, if we could, so yeah, that would be.
Jim, I think we've made kind of a strong statement as a group that that's a priority with these.
That phrase might be used a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, so that is, what would you, that be called a displacement? Tell me a phrase, so I can understand, I understand the concept, I'm trying to think of.
That seeks to limit displacement.
Yeah, limit displacement.
Of existing residents. Of existing residents.
Residents to rechar.
Yeah, we worked up, we worked up a statement in the, that was part of the vote when we decided to put this, the commission decided to prioritize this.
Yeah.
Me and MRI and Allison, actually, Allison also picked it up, so I mean.
Yeah, and then we pull that language out.
Yeah, so maybe we can use that language.
I've got that, I'm with you. The law would do that for Vizio, and there's.
That's all.
There are.
Not to, not to have everybody yelling, but to go back to number five real quick to work it, well, just to, just to put in a such as, the childcare.
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, so we have other slightly specific things, but yeah. And also, not to limit it just to courthouse, but to municipal building also, that it could be.
Somewhere in that.
Or employee needs, employees, it could be.
That would be specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do a such as.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, you understand what you put in, you're locking yourself into that.
I'm just doing that one on purpose, yeah.
Such as, such as is a.
Yeah, we can do a such as. I think, I think you're going to, if we're really going to do them, just saying, there's so many other needs, and they're going to pop up, and we need to deal with. You know, the wording should be focused and intentional, but broad enough that we can cover whatever comes up.
Childcare.
Yeah, my dad was here, he was his principal here. Yeah.
Well, I think what Allison mentioned, I mean, I don't think anybody here thinks childcare is a bad idea, but the more specific you get, the.
That's right.
All right, well, what about childcare?
We're like, I can't come to work because I've got to stay at home, because I have an adult in my house that can't be left alone.
And I agree with that, if we can find, like, again, like, on the childcare part, there has been a study, at the actual, this study actually came back even more reinforced this, we saw a representation. This need is studied, it is there, we have the numbers on it, it's necessary. And I mean, if we have, if we do want to know, if we come back to the same studies in, I think we'll support that.
This is a 10-year SPOS, and we don't, and there may be another study. I'm not knocking childcare, I just don't want us to overlook other issues that pop up.
And just thinking about the way our SPOS development process works, remember, we always begin with a concept, and that concept begins with that series of must-haves, highly-wanted and like-to-have, and as we develop those lists, we can always say a must-have is childcare.
Yeah, and we keep, and we're talking about the well-being project as our guiding tool. There's a lot of other stuff in that presentation we have not discussed as a commission. So that was just one thing that stood out, but when you look at the other things, there's some other things in there that we have not talked about as a commission. So I'm just, I don't want nobody, especially since Chris is back there recording, that think I'm against childcare. I just, the folk that I work with, there's so many more issues, that's all I'm saying. I work with on a daily basis. I'm not telling you what research is telling me, I'm telling you what I do.
Crystal used that very quick.
Tim, just as a bit of information, is due to wellness support groups, I mean, there's now a support group for caregivers within a unified government because of how that rose up in issues that staff, that the unified government staff, I mean, yeah, what work employees are dealing with. So that has increased in their wellness offerings because of how that came up. You just don't know what's going to come up, and so, and the attorney is on to having us have a broad term for support, you know, we want stuff that supports the employees that's in the building.
Okay, I mean, I'd be happy to say employee support services, such as childcare.
That's fine. And healthcare.
That's a great idea.
Put them both there.
Who are you going to get disabled to? I don't know.
Y'all got some cash, bring them further.
I have my claim, but that's what I said, that just needs to be broad, that's all, that's my claim. That ain't good.
I'll just say it again, the more specific you get, the more you tie yourself to.
And that's all I'm going to say.
All right, y'all, moving on to page two. Any fire equipment?
Yes, yes, yes. It says, it says, we fill the process for two stations and the training center. I don't think we have, need to have the number two in there.
I agree with that, Commissioner.
So let's work on that.
Anything else on page two? Moving on to the third page, sustainability.
So, I'm in number 11, I'm just, I'm trying to read this in a quick, replacements would include fire and emergency support vehicles, police cars, shared cars, fire engines, land truck, other fire apparatus, other vehicles associated with public safety services and operations. Does that cover pretty much everything?
Couldn't it say could include?
Which one are you on?
Number 11, bottom of page two, the third line, replacements would include, could it say could include? Okay, or may include?
I might, you know, I might consider making, I might make that more tentative, say would include public safety vehicles and equipment.
Period, yeah.
Period.
Yeah.
Thank you, you mask for flexibility.
All right, moving on to the third page, sustainability-related projects, renewable energy and the sustainability program, the Green State Acquisition Program.
I did for 51 and 84, and this is mainly because we already get into a lot of specifics on here, examples of eligible subprojects include, and I think these are all great, don't have a problem with those, it's, again, the language is not locking us in, but I'd also like to see added in there, stating about providing funds for community projects such as energy-efficient. But I'd also like to see added in there a statement about um providing funds for community projects such as energy efficiency upgrades and solarization of low income housing.
One of the things at SPOS is these have to be public owned expenditures, so so we can't, we we can't put something that a private individual would own. I mean, much as, you know, I I can hear what you're saying, just in terms of the legal conflict.
So we couldn't use it to do any kind of retrofitted, no?
Uh, but we can seek other grant funds to do that like we have every year.
Yeah.
Anything else on three? Uh, moving on to page four. Page four is, you know, provides one of those examples that Mike mentioned earlier, where we don't wanna kind of lock ourselves in by forestalling some components. And uh, it's, I think thematically, that's something that we're looking for in all of these parks and leisure services sites.
I don't know why these things are crossed out, project sixty-nine.
That's right, that's what I'm talking about.
There is a reason they were struck out.
Why?
Well, when the funding cut, those were items, and to give you some idea of what we had to try to take out of the project in order to get the funding cut down to that level. These were, these are converting the soccer fields to artificial turf, which is sort of a six million dollar expense. Now, it's still prob, just because we struck it here, it's still could probably be fit within the example of subprojects if you wanted to do a field down the road. We're trying to give you an idea of what was cut in order to get the budgets reduced.
I I I get that, but I guess for the, and I think it's helpful to us, um, but I I agree, like, if it's worse stuff than examples and we don't know what this might end up going towards, like.
We might wanna do this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's obviously the harm relieving in there if it's.
We got the, we got the message, we got the message.
Public services, but less. Flexibility. Yeah. I would also suggest that instead of it saying examples of eligible sub projects include, I would suggest that it read examples of eligible sub projects might include.
Greatest threat to flexibility. Yeah, that's a good idea.
And I would still argue, just, I mean, I might be that person that thinks this, but I I still think it's a better approach to a ladder services bucket.
Yeah.
Than to list each of these projects individually, because we may get to the point where we might need more money for part A.
Yeah.
And we don't have enough, and we've got too much money for part B, and we can't move that money over until the end of the SPOS.
But I definitely think a lot of people who are gonna be voting on this are voting specifically with us on part A.
I get that, I get that, but I still think that from the practicality of giving flexibility to um to be able to address things that come up, that we don't know what's gonna come up. But I think that's what, I think the bucket approach is better.
I think we did, we did a compromise with having, because we do, we do have a bucket now.
Yeah, of seven million dollars, and then kind of the most recent draft, and so that provides some flexibility. So certainly, you know, let's say we tap out the whole five million dollars and we realize, oh, we need five million eight hundred thousand, we can grow off of that bucket.
Yeah, but seven million dollars should often.
And I I have a question on some of these, so on the on the park ones, which is number thirty-nine, and also on six, I don't know how long you have. At the very end, we have added in there, additionally, funds can be used as matching funds for leveraging grant opportunities for additional development. Does that wording need to be there for us to 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 match funds for leveraging grant opportunities? Because like, do this part, like, you know, like, the number eighty-four, I mean, the number uh eighty-four, we could use that those funds to leverage grant opportunities so we could do things. So does that sentence need to be at the end?
I don't think that's a harm to anything, I think it's good. I mean, I don't see where, what's your concern?
So I I guess, like, I was wondering if it was necessary, so to put it on some of them.
Well, I think somebody must be concerned, they want it clear that we might use part of this to be able to get uh state grant, federal grant. And we want it clear that to the voters that that was the intent. I think that's the intent, y'all leave that in there.
And that was part of the, from the departments with the reduction in some of the project base, they specifically asked to put that in so that everybody knew that's how they're trying to make up what.
I think they're being transparent to vote with that.
Okay, so should we include that sentence on uh number eighty-four then? If you want eighty-four combo.
So we're good through page five now, we're we're just, we're on page four, we're on page five now.
That's actually. Add it on that, add it on the.
Page five, project fifty-seven, first one.
Okay.
A little trouble with the very first sentence, we provide for the purchase of land and associated master plan. I think it's purchase of the land and the development of associated master plan. This says we're buying associated master plan. We're not gonna be buying master plan, we're gonna be developing this.
Right, what I provided for was really what was like.
Well, you said buy, purchase of the land and the associated master plan.
Yeah.
So that's purchase of two things, land and master plan. So just, and the development of associated master plan. The other thing is, I think maybe that that grant wording should be added to this, to this project.
I I have a question here.
Well, I was gonna follow up on kind of what Jerry's last comment was, that, you know, if we're not gonna have a bucket for ladder services, which I still think is the best approach, if we're not gonna do that. I think this statement, additionally, funds can be used as matching funds for leveraging grant opportunities for additional development should be included on all of these part products.
Right, that's kind of what I was.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
And when I say, excuse me, when I say part products, I mean, including things like Sandy Creek Nature Center, anything with ladder services or like. Avita?
No, I'm good.
Okay. On project thirty-nine, bottom of the page, we struck out playground and picnic shelters, I don't think we need to strike those. We got the message.
Yeah.
Page six. Same, same problem on beach haven.
Yeah.
We struck, we didn't need to strike.
Take all the strike outs out.
In project seventy-nine, uh, there's a, there's a.
We should have a problem with project thirty-nine changing the wheel of the name.
That's fine. Yeah.
I I think all of those wheels should be changed to main, or words, or words like that.
On uh project seventy-nine, uh.
We're on page six.
Six, we are, I think we all agree, no one is voting that they don't, that we're changing the name of that park in this project to the Talisi Forest Nature Preserve.
Yeah.
So it's.
Number seventy-nine.
Nature Preserve.
Is there a, I'm curious, I know somebody sent me in that that Nature Preserve has some formal designation, and just in terms of locking ourselves in.
That's the whole idea, is to lock ourselves in. We want to send a clear message to the public and to leisure services and any consultants working on this project that it is first primarily a nature preserve. That's what it said, the amenities in the front are for education about nature in this nature preserve.
Thank you. I guess on that, like, maybe we need to double check, I would say the facilities at the beginning part, the intro part, it can still be included in a nature preserve? It doesn't like lock us in with like parking requirements or something like that?
Well, I mean. The Alconian Rivers Land Trust has agreed, should be named this.
Yeah, I mean, I I like the name.
The Alconian River Greenway Commission has agreed, should be named this. They 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 thought carefully about that.
I just don't know if it has some kind of legal statutory requirements that come with it.
It it does carry with it some state federal issues that should be locked into forever that you might not want.
No, we do.
I I hear the bears and. No, that's what I was gonna say is, if your concern is just with the the name.
No, it's not the concern.
No.
That's not the, that's not the.
That's right, what I was, what I was gonna say is, one idea might be uh to to formally, an action of the commission that goes to Brock Channel's approval meeting. From, how y'all follow here, to 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 name it that, but to put it in the document, that does not include, you know, if we find there are some restrictions about that name that this is for purposes of the following things, but not these regulations or something. If that's your concern, I think that's a valid concern, unless you intend for it to be subject to those type of regulations we file.
So since we don't know what they are.
So since we don't know what they are, that's what actually so that would concern me too.
I I sort of like the generic Talisi Forest.
No. Now, let me tell you one, we want people to vote for this, and there's a block of people out here who will vote against this, because it's not for nature.
I guess what I'd say is, like, let's try to go forward with it and see if those if those legal requirements are necessary and if not.
Yes.
We'll try to take a look at that promptly.
Yes.
Before next meeting on.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. And try to get you something out, a response before meeting. Andy?
Yeah, so I can share it.
It's. No favor. Oh, yes, and you share it.
So so Commissioner Neesmith, if we do do the nature preserve, do we need to strike the children's play areas?
No, and I think that's the thing we need to find out, is if any of those components.
Somebody's default would be allowed.
Would it be allowed?
I don't know that.
He's my, that's what I mean, tell us that. Staff told you that?
They didn't tell me that.
So let's explore that and.
Yes, yes, the attorney wants to check for us, yes.
Let's explore that and come back, because we know we've got some research that we're not gonna do Googling tonight.
Andy?
Jerry, I wanna guess that.
I believe I have.
Well, let's let the attorney check it out.
So just, i- if we're gonna change the name to preserve, which I have, I have a problem with, because when we purchased this land, that was kind of the intent of it. Line three of the description talks specifically about park communities that need to be changed.
Yeah, just say amenities.
Okay. Or preserve amenities.
Okay. And not, don't say will, say may.
Mm-hmm.
So make that a universal.
Anything else on page six?
Does the Bishop Park Improvement Project get a little too specific or focusing on the aquatic areas with that, or?
Which one do you want to?
The view.
Did you, did you point it out?
Number, yeah, number thirty-eight, I guess, yes, I guess if we include it, that one gets really specific on, actually, the very last sentence, I think, it's really specific. It says, remaining funds would target pedestrian improvement offense project along Popcorn Avenue. Clearly have some funding going towards that, so I would say we strike that entirely.
Or or including that kind of broader.
That may include.
Just political sub projects could include.
Yeah, and definitely take out the remaining funds to target, yeah.
And that's in fact, it's still for improving pedestrian access, right?
Yeah, pedestrian improvements just are another name in there.
It's another one of the possibilities, but right now, if we're toward it, we would have to.
So are you comfortable just using that may with that?
Yep, yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Anything else on six before we move on? All right, moving on to page seven.
Just making sure that that whole thing, grant, could be used for grant.
I mean, Bear Hollow Zoo.
We'll we'll add it to both of those.
Oh, Bear Hollow Zoo now, just in case anybody wants to know. So the list.
They lost faith.
Oh.
They lost faith.
On page seven, project thirty-seven, I want to ensure that, kind of in the middle of that statement, we say something like, as we've already said with other projects, this project may include land acquisition, design construction, and other costs, just to provide for the sort of generic notion, because we don't know exactly what this thing will be like. And if it's under four years from now, there may be, may be technology that does not include land acquisition.
Okay. Yeah, there's something else, go ahead.
I wanted to go back to sixty, Bear Hollow, I see that the project will include improvements such as addition of water and sewer infrastructure. And since we have enterprise funds that cover that kind of stuff, I'm not sure that we wanna dedicate SPOS money that when we internally, within the government, might have enterprise funds for water sewer improvements.
Thank you.
The convention has made that, Chris, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then on thirty-seven, I happened to do a little bit of homework on this one to help with what we're already talking about. This article that we just had in our county news, collaboration is key to adding broadband. Um, it talks specifically, and I can give you this article, Mr. Turney, too, because it might help formulate what we don't wanna lock ourselves into, and Kelly, you started in on that. And it talks specifically the the means of collaboration between local, state, federal governments, as well as private companies and others. Um, it talks about an example of getting, of this county getting four, seven million dollars from USD Asia brand, and the county kicked in four million for them. And this addressing the broadband, um, using broadband to close the urban and rural divide, and I think we have that within our own county. And so, instead of making it seem like we're gonna become a wireless internet provider, that we really get generic on this one and make sure that we've got all the partnerships listed. And this article covers that really well.
Thirty-seven, when I read that, it concerned me a little bit, because it says will revive the coast and high school, I was never looking around the entire county.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it, I would wanna make sure we know that's possible, because if we don't, it may lock us into doing that.
It's actually, it's actually worse than that, because it might be that we can do partnerships with other companies and achieve the same goal.
So I I would, we'll keep to try and address that thing.
Here this, is is this, this very strongly implies that we're gonna be operating a wireless network. And I don't want us to lock ourselves into it, we're gonna operate a wireless network. I I agree with that, it'd be concerning me to, because I think for one thing, annual operating impact is way lower if we're gonna operate a wireless network. I've done this for a living.
That's back still on my my input from what I was reading, and it ties into what you said earlier, Kelly. Could we have a statement in there that that this funding could allow for incentive to to help our county residents with connectivity and service, but that way?
I like that term connectivity, that's what I was thinking about, for improved connectivity, and not specify, maybe not, because what do we know what that may look like in, as fast as technology is changing? I'd like the chance to look.
Thirty-seven, I think, like some of the others, just needs a fair bit of financing.
I will, and then, so are you saying we couldn't have, like, let's say we were trying to help people pay for being connected? You're saying we can't do anything for individual taxpayers, it has to be a a public improvement?
We could have some public facilities that might end up with that net result, because the public facilities might be cited geographically within the county, such that more people of lower means maybe take advantage of them. But those would still have to be ours, or they'd have to be ours even though.
We could put a five G antenna in a neighborhood.
Anytime that opens near that.
I'm sorry.
Just finish, just to help finish my my topic, that, so, and then, like, if we ended up having clusters where we were putting something in that allowed a cloud in the neighborhood, does that maintain?
I think as long, as long as we own the structure, I think we'd be fine.
Okay.
We might could rent the space, we don't know how that might look, but I understand the concern.
I'll just give you some of my notes.
That'd be great, it'd be helpful.
Because I was doing a little. Okay, then I'm done.
Andy?
Two things, one, I think it's important to understand where this project origin came from, and it has largely to do with the fact that they're in the more rural parts of our community. People are some, they're they're using dial-up still. You know, because the private uh internet service providers are not providing that service, so I I'm not, I'm less interested in helping people pay for access. I'm more interested in providing the infrastructure so that people can have access, period. But the second, my other question is, um, and this is more of a legal one, if we, if we build this and then the uh private internet service providers go to the general assembly, and the general assembly passes a prohibition bill against municipal internet utilities, where do we stand?
That would be a concern, man, of, that project would be infeasible then at that point, and then there's some language that says what you do with projects is infeasible and not possible. And I think it includes, uh, well, I don't wanna speak out and turn out after searching, but it's addressed on the SPOS law.
No, I understand.
That's what I.
That's my question, I understand if it's, if we haven't built it, we're possibly.
I don't think there would be a, it would just be a project that was in the law room, not very proven, you know, I mean, was that.
That couldn't stop us.
I would think they probably grandfathered in or vested in, right? I mean, I.
That's really kind of, that's where I was kind of going, I mean, I, I understand if we haven't yet built it and they pass a prohibition, then it becomes infeasible. But if we've already built it, are are these kinds of things, do we tend to be grandfathered in?
I would think we would, I can't speak to what the legislature might.
And we're not the only, we've got, Columbia County actually already did this, um, so I mean, there's a, there's multiple, so I mean, I think that.
I understand that, but, but. But the General Assembly is a beast of a time. Nature.
A beast, a unique entity.
I'm glad that Andy brought up about where this comes from in the rural areas. That is a big, big issue on that Nowhere Road area right before you get to Jackson County. I have folks that wanted to do home-based businesses out there and they couldn't because of no good internet service. So I hope once we get, you know, get this on here that we don't forget where that initiated from. I, you know, downtown is downtown, but that is not where this thing.
I agree. And I think if we could have some kind of language that, right now, I think this first sentence, actually, it doesn't say, but it makes it sound like it says like around the entire county. And it makes you think the entire county. I don't know if we could have some kind of wording in there that says like, you know, we'll work to ensure.
Greater areas.
Yeah, yeah. Some, but something that speaks to that because whenever people look at this, and they just read the downtown area.
And that's what I, that was the only thing I saw.
But on the other hand, the problems that we have with access aren't just rural. We have, we have town, we have people.
And, and because you said that, that's even more reason, that's even more reason we need to be explicit of where this comes. There needs to be a priority. I leave pockets, but when I looked at this, the only thing that jumped out at me was downtown area. I didn't even read the rest of it. And so I just want to, you know, put that out there.
So thirty-seven, I think he's going to get a wholesale review. All right, moving on to sixty-seven.
Page seven, from page seven. My understanding was that this was, originally came about as the project of somewhere on the east side. Is that, no, I'm with the case.
I, I think the intent still is to have that be the case. Do you want to kind of specify that this is for East Athens area?
Probably.
Of course.
Because like.
Of course you would.
We could have a west side park.
And have an east side.
I'm off, I'm off. Y'all got the eyes on that truck. And I think everybody recognizes that that was the kind of genesis of this is to, in the same way that we provided for some youth development funds that were committed to west side of Athens, that, you know, this is eastern Athens. Eastern Athens.
But I think putting it in, much as the west side park, and I support your west side park, I do. Even though I still think we need a bucket for legislative park in general, but I was, I'm okay with that being.
Okay, I'm taking.
No, I'm, I'm more the big one. But I think specifying somewhere on the east side and nowhere in particular, I'm, so it will help.
No address listed, yeah.
Yeah, will help people both way because I think there's the expectation that's where it came from.
Can it even be in a title, using.
East Athens Youth and Community Improvement Program.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, it keeps it consistent with the library. The library does say east side of Athens. I wonder about on that same one, number sixty-seven, the last sentence that gives the examples of potential partner organizations? I know there's been a little bit of pretentiousness around some of the stuff there, like the BizTown specifically. Is that, is that sentence necessary? Or helpful?
It is, well, it doesn't alarm me that greatly because it says examples of potential organizations, of maybe organizations, could be organizations. I mean, I don't think if there was, I don't know what the policy decision was in including it, so I don't think it would hurt to take it out. I don't want to hurt the work of the committee that came up with it. I don't understand. It doesn't concern me because it says examples, you know, so it doesn't limit you. But I wouldn't have a problem taking it out, but there may be a policy reason to put it in from the committee members or something I'm aware of. Because of the term examples, it doesn't lock us into you being, or such. It gives you flexibility. That's the thing I'm looking at when I'm reading it. So I don't want, I wouldn't want to destroy the intent, but I don't.
It's pretty close to what was in the twenty-eleven project with the exception of the school district. At least add him as an example.
Yeah.
On the BizTown.
I think that's fine. And I do agree, it probably does help. I don't think having the junior chief of BizTown that helps, though. I agree with that, yeah.
So we could, it doesn't limit. We could take that, take that.
I take, I take that example out.
But you understand that later on, if another commission wanted to do it.
Sure. Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. But I think it potentially hurts it on the, on the ballot.
All right, anything else on page eight? Animal shelter, east side library, or the MRF and reuse facility? Andy?
The only thing, project number fifty-nine. I'm still not convinced that South East Clark Park is the best location for this.
Yeah, maybe we just strike that whole phrase generally.
And the reason I say that is I think it's too far away from where people live.
Yeah.
For kids to walk to the park.
Far away from the schools.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer that we drop a pin near the highest density population cluster possible.
So this, I would just have it, will extend library services to county residents by adding a new facility located on the east side of Athens, period.
Yeah, cool. Is it, is it, okay, we done?
I am now.
Is it, sorry, is it too specific to, to, with the next sentence? Or that's the expectation? We need to have it in there? Full, full service?
Approximately thirty thousand seniors.
What's the concern? I mean.
Just as a number.
It's.
Yeah, well, what might concern me is, who knows? Library is the future, maybe touchscreen things where you go in there and you're, everyone has their own portal. So when you're talking about, that would be a long, this is going to be eleven years and how things are going to change. You want it to be, a library may look vastly different.
So you could have this annex facility with a full-service library, period.
Yeah.
Full stockings.
I think Americanized.
Anything else? Fifty, project fifty-nine or forty-eight, forty-nine?
Forty-eight?
I guess we, I mean, again, we have like the approximately, like a set number, like, I mean, those things. Yeah, and if it's fine to have that kind of thing, we want to have a, give the public a general idea of the square footage of the facility. But if that locks us into the public in any way.
Historically, we put some numbers like that. That doesn't mean we're going to have to continue that way.
And we know what requires any, like, assuming that solid waste says that's what they need.
We just got some details added on page, don't forget about page number.
We're just coming over to nine.
That was because we tried to combine the two projects. I tried to add, provide some of the scope from the other project.
Should it be a may again, instead of a will?
Sure.
A will, a may.
Could be a may, a renovate. So a will have it.
All right, anything else on page nine?
Some of the wills have to be there, like project three will provide for planning much of the capital replacements. That's what it is.
Yes. Andy? So on the, on page nine, for project eighty-one, I would strongly argue for the thirty-four million dollar option.
I just threw out some generic language. You're not knowing what you're going, so.
All right, and we're going to get into the dollars in just a minute, but I think he's made a pitch of thirty-four million dollars classic standard.
Well, the reason I say that because then that changes the, like I was just all keepers alluding to, that that changes the numbers on seating capacity. It changes the numbers on the square footage.
Changes the number. From a decent word, again, about public project partners for those other ventures that's not here. I just threw a question.
So eighty-one will get finesse based on the desired problem. So project number eighty-one's description will be finesse based on the dollar value.
And then we also will keep it in the same frame of flexibility as needed, like you just did the other ones, right? So that in case the sweeps came in and left seats, I don't want, just won't have that.
Right.
Put that top seat. But I did like to grab that key, that phone to place over.
Well, just.
At fifty-five, I'm sure you noticed it, but I did cha, I did take out advantage behavior because you never know when you get to the point of building this, is that still the entity you're partnering with or could it be another entity by that time? So I tried to word it based on the description of the facility I heard you say, you know, because you would probably ultimately, like the youth facilities, go out with an R and B and make sure that's still, or maybe not.
Now, this is part of, this is part, this is, this was designed by the Advantage Behavioral Health System. This is part of their program. It has a very specific purpose. And without their participation, I don't know if I'd want it.
But perhaps they, just say they went out of business in five years before you built it and somebody else came in.
And what do we, uh.
Well, okay.
So I might say kind of regional health service provider.
Change it to community service board. Because there will be a community service board. It was called Advantage or something else. There will be, sustain it to community service board, community service board.
So in the vein of this example, we had had something in the previous splosh that said with Athens Regional Medical Center. And so now, but I'm just saying, when there could be the name change, is that also one of those flexibilities that can happen?
Name change would be okay.
I would think one could change. Well, it would, it would still be the same functional entity. It may be a different name with a different management. But it's still a state community service.
Is that the term state community?
I'll make sure we get that right. Back to project, back to project eighty-one for a minute. We didn't put in this.
What page?
It's.
Eighty-nine, eighty-one classic standard.
We did put in the same specific, same language we put in for the courthouse as regards to, you know.
Well, so I wondered about that, like, what if we, there was a statement saying something like that referenced the public statement of.
The mission, what's this thing called? The mission statement?
Statement of public.
Well, it's only in that word.
Well, in, in that, that is pretty lengthy. I don't know that we'd have that entire.
But the only reason we're just getting a little bit of weight, but also.
And you, you might say facility content could include things, including facilities for employee support.
Yeah, exactly. Because it could be, like, the leader was referencing, employee support could also be personal finance class or a place that something's happening with that.
All right, I find this having the same language that we're going to have, yeah, for specialization. Employee services.
You got, you guys already cracked.
Yeah.
Overcare. Financial service.
We got anything else on page ten?
What, what were you, ten? Ten, okay. Mr. Turner, you're going to look at the CSV.
I have a question.
Yep. Andy?
So for the airport capital improvements program, much of the leisure services, we put in something about using that money for matching costs. We want to do that.
Yeah, let's hang that on the.
Is it, is it where?
It's another, second sentence. Funny, maybe you said.
Yeah, that's the main purpose of this, this.
All right, I didn't see that, sorry.
Am I?
I took it out of the tile, so it would be assumed that's all it would be used for.
Okay, we're good, we're good.
Anything else on ten? All right, moving on to page eleven, Vincent, Talisi, and the.
Art Walk. I've got something for Talisi Road Connection Project. It says, following the mayor and commissioner approved Athens in motion plan and Greenway Master Plan should be added.
Here's the project. And Greenway Network Plan. Anything else on page eleven?
And then again, in Greenway.
Greenway Network.
Say it's an approved document. It's kind of like a preserve.
But this connection to the preserve, is there any, I haven't looked above.
No children.
Is there any conflict between those, the Wayne National Department's discussion?
Wayne National Work Plan.
Andy?
Well, just, I'm going to put my professor hat on for a second.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. School's out.
Do we have a geography lesson here?
All right.
Which topic, don't worry about that.
Number six. There's a missing text here. It says, we'll provide for capital improvements for street and pedestrian improvements between, to establish pedestrian oriented promenades.
That's awkward. Awkward wording. Well, I use my red pen out, missing text. I used the word improvements twice, too. It's bad style.
Well, I do think you asked for street, had to be in there simply because it's, it was part of.
I don't want to be too quick for a minute. Which one are you? Number seven. Number seven, bottom of the list. The first sentence is a little awkward.
Okay, we'll clean it up and then put Jackson. You want to call it the Jackson Art Walk?
Jackson Street.
Jackson Street.
Other than that, the Citizens Advisory Committee was reviewing it for Jackson Street, what is the harm in making it more general than that in case anything happens with Jackson Street?
I don't think there's any harm, but I think what went through the, through the committee, said Jackson Street. Also think, considering the things that may be happening around that area, that being amenity for those things that are happening around the area. And two, it's part of a specific project that was drawn from the downtown master plan. So, so there's, it draws upon all sorts of, all sorts of other things, whereas other things really, really don't. I mean, and two, specific to making sure that there's a connection to the London House, which sounds very important, and it's on Jackson Street, so that's.
Yeah, it's a lot.
On, on, going back one project, the project eighty also on page eleven, the one thing I am concerned about a little bit is that we're talking about doing four million dollars around there. And it says sidewalk connector along the Talisi Road. The alternate project that we're looking at actually funding would not be the entirety of Talisi Road. From what I've looked at alternate, I think it runs the Mitchell Bridge Road.
It depends on whether you do a five foot sidewalk or you do a ten foot, or you do that part.
Which that part's not as, but I guess, I guess I get concerned that we are somehow, we have to make it along the entirety of the Talisi Road from the county line to.
Make it provide.
Whatever. Yeah, what intended is that, but.
Yeah.
You want to, I guess.
Like corridor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Associated with Talisi Road.
Yeah. Or through, through Talisi Road corridor, yeah, something, but like not making it sound like we have to somehow build it for the entirety.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point because the mayor, you're discussing, mayor, your concern with making sure that we didn't lock ourselves like having down the trail, you said, the railroad.
Yeah, no, I was kind of referencing for Judd, the Firefly example where we might have wished for some deviations from the original rail bed and now we don't have that option.
Yeah.
Might have wished we'd done a lot of things that.
Yeah, I think it.
And, and to back up, Commissioner, she's correct. I mean, once you put this Jackson Street, if you're limiting it, y'all, y'all, y'all already paid.
The name changes. Both the Nowhere Road changes.
Change, okay, we can do that.
It's still the same road.
Yeah, what if the London House burns down? Then we'd build another art place.
And you might understand if you want to do other artwork projects in other areas.
This is part, this is part of the downtown master plan.
And so it's, it's close to the Walker Center, so it could be that we use a little of that, one project merging with the other. So there is, I think should be some.
I think with all.
Interior.
I think it helps with all the other activities that would be happening down here.
Jackson Street.
Jackson Street.
You could say art wall project in the Jackson Street area. In the Jackson Street. It is, it is a brand. I mean, it is. Jackson Street already.
That's been.
Fair enough.
If we screw it up and rise in the top, we, we totally suck.
We will not be building these strong streets. Hang on, page twelve, do a, do a rename Winterville.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you would, would the town go out of business?
Water trails project.
All right, what about water trails? Do we have that?
Any water trail street through here?
Water project.
Water access, you know what? Hey, I just now noticed this now that we're, we're speaking. So it's called Water Access Project. It can only be called a water trail if there's two points of access on the same road that are getting you into and out. So it should be.
Same river.
Water, water access or river access.
But I think they wanted it.
Water trails.
I think they wanted to be that guy, but they're all connected now that UGA took out the dam.
No, they're not, no, I mean.
I might call this the water access.
Not, not within.
I might. You just gotta pedal. You might, you might consider this, what if you call the water access improvement project?
The river access.
It's not improving anything, nothing.
Water access, the whole point is water access. So, and then once there's two points that can logistically be done by the general public. Can become a water trail. What do you want with that?
What about the river access first?
What do you want to add to that issue?
I'm not going there.
Water trail has an official state recognized definition.
It has a state designation.
Yeah, so it has to have a.
Oh, the dreamer in me was only wishing, okay.
Are we, all right, so, so I think we're good before we sink any deeper in this.
Or. Let's not get swept away.
Yeah.
Let's not drown in this.
Don't drift too far from shore.
Bring me a life jacket, please.
All right, thank you all for that exercise, while it was challenging, I think it's helpful.
It was all right.
All right, if everyone would grab your very exciting mobile colored sheet. You have the next element of our conversation. So just to orient everybody, um, you got a column with the project name. Uh, you've got a column that includes both those designated projects that we voted on earlier this year, along with the citizens committee recommended projects. You have a staff proposal that was sort of launched to us as a way to modify somewhat what we received from the citizens. And then members of this body gathered together, and I give Mike a lot of credit for doing the, the spreadsheet calculus here. Uh, I think you can teach the Excel class now, if anybody needs that certification. And then you see that based on the available, availability of that five million extra dollars, the financing costs have been reduced. The, what you see in the last two columns, the potential revision to mayor and commission alternate lists. With kind of the final column noting the change from the most recent list. So if you're looking at maybe that second to last column, potential revision to mayor and commission alternate lists with reduced debt service. What you notice there is a couple of changes that staff made. Um, staff first reduced the bond amount, which you see, third row at the top. Uh, staff lightly increased Sandy Creek Nature Center, adding about seventy-seven thousand dollars just to get the totality of that project in. Uh, there was a similar modification to Bishop Park, just to ensure that the full pool could be completed, so that was moved from four million to five million. Um, staff also recommended just a very slight twenty-seven thousand dollar addition to the animal shelter. And then that leaves us with nearly four million dollars unallocated. And so I guess what, what we may wanna ask is, other than that unallocated four billion dollars, is there a level of comfort with the second to last column?
Well, what are we gonna do with, uh, Classic Center?
Well, and, and that's where we may begin to talk about that four billion dollars.
Yeah, where we're at now, I'm, I'm comfortable with that column.
All right, so, so to move the Classic Center from.
Twelve, not lying, I did that, yeah.
So then, to get into the Classic Center, to move the Classic Center from twenty-eight million to thirty-four million, we would need to add that four billion dollars. And we would need to expand the total package value by just over two million.
Okay.
We would have to do those two things.
Okay. Can I, can I throw out one more proposal, sir?
Well, I mean, absolutely.
I'm, I'm fine with that, and I was, uh, I was just going over some of the stuff and, um, I saw that staff proposed revisions previous on, on the third column to bring back the mobile research laboratory for the Athens versus clinic. And it's only five hundred thousand dollars, and I honestly think that, um, the, the benefits that we'll get out of that, um, would be huge. I mean, adding two mobile exam rooms that will be staffed with, uh, medical students. So it'd be very low operating cost, I think the, we get a lot out of it. Um, I know the prosperity pack is one of the things that Mike put on there was having some kind of healthcare navigators, while it's not exactly that. Um, it lets them get into low income communities, I watched the video of this presentation, they talked about right now, really going into metal and having to set up pop-up tents that take them hours and hours to do and have very limited capacity, it's not air conditioned, it's hot. I think it'd be well worth it to add that five hundred thousand dollars for that into it.
Well, let me say this too, I mean, some money that, and I don't mind that, I mean, I just don't start looking at either we add or reduce something. I mean, there's nothing, you know, we've got a lot of leisure services projects there. And certainly, if it'd go under budget or over budget, it can certainly fall within the park facilities improvement program. So maybe in order to do what you're asking Tim, we reduce the park facilities improvement program from seventy-two to sixty-seven. Six point seven. See where I'm going?
Um.
Or could be a bucket?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Since it is just a bucket, I mean.
It's just a bucket. It's a small bucket.
If I remember the great Hank Williams route, my bucket's got a hole in it and.
And it's falling into a nursing.
So, um, Ovita.
Alan, like, uh, I didn't think about that, um, that mobile research, uh, lab and, and the connection, it could be to the prosperity package. Um, we know that, for me, everything needs to be connected to economically impact, that's just the way I'm wired. And I could see that mobile, I mean, I, I could see that mobile research lab also work with, um, um, our, our, um, healthcare people already here, and I'm thinking more about innovative programs that, um, Dr. Allen runs, I'm thinking about Athens Tech. So for me, I could, I could do that because I can see an economic value to it, not just a, um.
If you can work on Monday because you've had access to.
So I could, I could, I could, I could go with that, if, if people can help me see where things economically connect, I'm good.
Yeah, it helps that workforce, definitely.
Yeah.
Some help, they get some more work.
So to kind of move us forward in terms of straw poll, does everybody feel comfortable drawing half a million dollars from leisure services general bucket for the mobile lab?
Before.
Okay.
Before we make that call, I, I guess I would, I'd just like, since we're so far down this road, can somebody give me a little more information about the costs associated with the high speed wireless broadband network project?
Well, that was the cost that, that our staff came up with when they did the, this, this came from our IT staff.
Okay.
And they designed the network and did some research and came up with that stuff.
Okay.
And it was modeled on this specific loop?
Yeah, it was fairly, fairly specific design. And they modeled it on.
On, on, on putting, putting, this is a wireless network using towers, but.
To mesh.
And they put, they, they placed the towers and then, and then research had, it cost to build those towers and buy the equipment. To set that initially.
We also developed a high speed fiber around the loop, so it can connect all those towers.
No, it's actually, it's actually not.
I thought the, going to the towers.
Yeah. All wireless.
All right. So, so Russell, just, just looking at that, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, there's, as we've heard in the earlier discussion, some flexibility into how that could be modeled, whether it's public private partnership, whether it's focused on some pieces of geography, whether it's cited near kind of concentrations of low income folks, so given some of that flexibility, I, I might make the general recommendation, let's leave that dollar static for now. Knowing that there could be some heavy flow down the road.
And I guess that was my question about, uh, is there, uh, any room for, uh, public and private partnerships, and I think I just heard you say that.
Yes, yes, no, I think we're specifically interested in having a prospect.
So while I was trying to understand and like, a little bit like Russell just said, I haven't even had the description in front of me for the mobile research laboratory. And then I heard Ovita say something about innovative medical services. Are, are we saying that to be flexible with that topic, we add, we're adding five hundred thousand in, because I guess that came with it. Would we rename it to be something as an innovative medical services for the community, or that was just you talking about?
She was using that.
I was using that as an example of how we could work with innovative services, which is Dr. Allen's program, and, um, and I was.
Just making sure the job description follows available.
Well, we gotta see.
We have resource, we have people here that are being trained and, and we can use them as workers too, plus going to the community.
So that is, that is the project.
Dr. Allen, I want to make this public, hates that project, mobile research lab. Well, then she's gonna be a part of that.
But this, that also towards Department of Public Health, T-Mon, Athens Regional, list order, all partners, mental ramp, you know.
And so, once it's on the list with what seems to me to be a small amount of money, five hundred thousand, once it's on the list, if money comes available and we need more to it, it's on the list, and so therefore.
And that five hundred thousand is actually already more than they asked for, like, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Yeah, so, so if they're earned interest dollars later on, those are the other.
So are you gonna make this a menu, yeah?
So, everybody's okay with that?
All right, does it comfort level with that? All right, a, a, any other, any other modifications kind of in that longer list that folks wanted to know?
Sorry, say that again, Cal.
A, any other modifications in that column?
Uh, where, yeah, I was just asked this question, where in leisure services is the bar?
So they're part.
It's the first yellow, it's the second yellow line.
Second part, park facility improvements program.
Thank you.
Park facility improvements program. All right, so, all right, so again, a prospect that I wanna go ahead and confirm with everybody is that we take the savings from our early anticipation of the bonding cost and devote that to the Classic Center and expand the total package length by just north of two million dollars to achieve the thirty-four million dollar plus ceiling.
I'm fine with that, what does that make the total cost overall?
Over the three eleven, five forty-five, eighteen.
And how many years?
That's gonna be, I mean, it's the estimate for eleven years is around three oh nine, but that's an estimate based on a projection of two percent over, over eleven years.
So, r- right now with our best estimate, just over eleven years.
Wait a minute, did I, I thought we were doing three percent of your decrease, you said we'll base it on two?
Based on two percent.
Oh, well, that's good, because it's, it's doing more than that and, oh, okay.
Conservative estimate.
No, I like that it's conservative.
And again, like, just to reiterate, like, I, I'm, I'm happy with us doing that if we don't get the, uh, the employee services, including childcare, add into the, the services. Purpose, like, is it right?
Right, and, and again, it's the same, same language with the municipal facility, we're using Classic Center.
No, 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 no.
Such as.
Andy?
Um, we use such as.
They have elderly, they're here for you.
I have a sick dog right now, he's amazing.
He's got the floor.
So, the, um, does that, does adding this five million approximately, or four, where it was, looking back at the Classic Center, I mean, if I'm thinking about what we're gonna bond, there are obviously some big ticket items that we will, we will bond, and I would like to see the space modernization, the affordable housing, and the Classic Center as priority bonding projects because the first two are what we need to do, and the second, the third one, Classic Center, the thing we do at the center brings us revenue that helps pay for some of this other stuff.
Oh, Russell.
So my, my question is, does that change the amount that we were anticipating bonding, which was a hundred and twelve million, if I recall.
Hundred and seventy-seven.
Hundred and twenty-seven.
No, that's what we modeled.
Well, we, we modeled thinking that ninety million would go towards these two projects early, uh, and at one point we'll be on number thirty-seven for Classic Center. But you could, you could decide how you wanna break up that hundred and twenty-seven between the three years, uh, that's a hundred, rather, hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty. Your hundred and fifty million total between those three projects.
I guess my question is, if we were to bond a hundred and fifty million dollars, how much would that do to the map?
We'd have to go back. And again, in, in half a year, we'd be collecting around twelve million dollars, so by six months into the program, we would get you there. Because we'd have actual collection of pennies in addition to a few of the other ones bonded.
I know, but we're, if we were to, let's just say, those three projects, the affordable housing, the space modernization, and the Classic Center, if we decided we wanted to bond those three at thirty-four million. The other amounts there, it's a total of a hundred and fifty-six million. Okay, so what does that do to our, it's hypothetically, what would that do to our bonding, um, costs?
Well, if you're right now at a hundred and twenty-seven million, it's about thirteen million dollars annual debt service.
So that's about two percent.
It's probably gonna be close to fifteen million, so you're eating up a lot of your annual floss proceeds with debt payment. So it costs about sixteen million for a hundred and twenty-seven, uh, probably looking at eighteen million. Or more, a little more, so you're using up considerable amount.
Okay.
And, and the reason that, uh, it was brought to me to do the seventy million for judicial center and twenty million upfront for the affordable housing. And then, of course, we would be, uh, doing the full thirty-seven million, thirty-four million, whatever for the, uh, Classic Center, because that gives you money to get started in those programs. And then you let your, uh, floss revenues catch up.
So is that.
If it was proportional, it'd be about ninety-four. Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I mean, personally, I think those are the three things that we need to focus on early on, and I know we'll do the, assuming it's possible, we'll do that, see the schedule.
Plan immediately after.
Later, but I would make a strong pitch to do those three early. Because one of them is a generator of revenue, the other two we need to do.
If, if the interest went up directly proportionally, of course, it would be roughly ninety-four seven days versus a sixty.
So finally, we're looking at, um, over eleven years, three hundred and eleven billion, is that correct?
Approximately. Three eleven, real bottom, twenty-five, fifty. And twelve cents.
And we'll call it, with that, probably, I guess, that would be the tolls we write in reference.
All right, so is, is that what you would like to see?
Yes.
Next Thursday? On the Jennifer vote.
Yeah, we need to see the wording for the.
Obviously, we've got some wordsmithing to do in terms of project values, that's what we'll be looking at, uh, within Thursday.
Yeah, at one point, seeing this document again in the further statements, do you wanna see a clean document, please? Without the strippers.
No, no, uh, yeah, that'd be all right.
Or are you like a starting start fresh, or do you want some of these.
Clean document.
You've asked us.
We're at that point, right?
Yeah, I think we're at the point where it's.
But does this give our attorney enough time to?
Yeah, we'll get. We'll get, um, prior, you know, we're.
When, when are you gonna try to get the clean document to us?
I don't wanna have to read it three hours before the meeting.
Right, exactly.
Could, could we get it by Tuesday?
I was thinking Tuesday.
Okay.
So next Thursday, a Zoom call?
City hall, six.
Six. Be there or be.
Yeah, we're, we're still meeting Tuesday for our regular agenda setting meeting where Jared E. Smith will be presiding. Uh, that will be in Manhattan.
You don't have to come, I heard you didn't.
I'm gonna send the audience to Mike.
And special call meeting on Thursday at six o'clock specifically.